Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. It is 6:03 PM and we are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And I am calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. We will start with roll call. Candace.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols. Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Yeah.
Todd Casper.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Okay, we have a couple special presentations to begin our meeting tonight. And the first of those is will be delivered by Ron Brisboy, the executive director of the Grant County Economic Development Corporation. Adam, would you care to make an introduction?
Yeah, so obviously, the Grant County Economic Development Corporation was chartered as a 501(c)(4) on December 17, 1986, and currently consists of 13 Grant County communities and the county of Grant. The city of Platteville has been a longstanding member of this organization. So the mission of the Grant County Economic Development Corporation is to assist the communities of Grant County in their efforts to promote the growth and retention of business and industry and to enhance the quality of life for our residents. They accomplish this mission through aggressive marketing of their assets and facilitating cooperation between state agencies and the communities. Ron Brisboy is the executive director of Grant County Economic Development. Currently, his position does not offer benefits in relation to health, retirement, workers' compensation, et cetera. So over the course of 2022, the conversation has been had during the Grant County Economic Development monthly meetings about the potential to move towards a model for long-term recruitment and retention where the position would be eligible for benefits. Grant County Economic Development recently received proposals from Southwest Technical College and Grant County regarding having the executive director position become an employee under their organizations and provide the executive director position with benefits. So Ron Brisboy is obviously in attendance this evening. He's going to provide the council community with a brief overview of the proposals and obviously allow the council members of the community to ask any questions regarding the impact this could have on Grant County Economic Development and the city of Platteville.
Thank you, Adam. I am Ron Brisboy. I'm the director. As stated, I've been here since December 2nd, 1999. One of the second longest tenured, or however you want to call it, economic development, county economic development person in the state is my understanding from a person lobbyist in Madison. As Adam indicated, we've gone through a significant amount of change right now, potentially within the corporation. The corporation does not offer health insurance benefits. And so the, I started to bring this to the attention of the board several years ago. In the last, really in the last two years, as my wife has indicated, is a long-term educator, elementary school teacher. She is planning to retire and she's the insurance carrier. And so first time that we've ever been able to really do this within the corporation. But we, I sent it out as Adam indicated, RFPs, proposals, requests for proposal. We actually received four initially. One from Southwest Regional Plan Planning Commission, one from Southwest Workforce Development Board, then the other two, as Adam stated, from Grant County and from Southwest Tech. I narrowed it down to two, the two strongest that I felt the most viable. A lot of change going on within the corporation. In April, my assistant retired. At this time, based on the proposals, I do not, you know, I have a history of being a very fiscally conservative and operating this organization. And as you look at respects to how we are funded, I'll stand by that very staunchly. The, but we have, tomorrow is my monthly board meeting. It is being hosted here within the city of Platteville. We're touring Sasquatch Centennial Hall at 5 o'clock and then having my full board meeting at 6 o'clock at the Busby Hall, which is connected to the Sasquatch Centennial Hall and or Sasquatch Hall. That is easier for me to pronounce. I guess that's what the students call it. But the, you know, we will have the, in essence, what I'm going to do, the city of Platteville has two votes on my board of directors. This Grant County has three. All other communities have only one that are dues-paying members. And so I'm going to, in essence, I think many of my communities have indicated they want me to make, as the director, to make a recommendation. Is that this isn't about internal operations. I have to pay the bills. It's and decide the budget year after year of what the corporation is. And so my goal is tomorrow is to make a recommendation to the board and request a roll call vote. The benefits themselves, the both proposals by both Southwest Tech and the county were both met what I was looking for. They're offering health insurance, part of their group health, whether it be the technical college or the county, both very strong. Both I consider, you know, as we all know, insurance is not inexpensive and also part of the WRS, Wisconsin Retirement System. So I felt both were very quality proposals and we will move forward with them. In either case, the both proposals require that we submit funding. We pay for this. The technical colleges proposal required that we submit 90% of our municipal dues, what we gather from like the city of Platteville, the $19,159 we receive from the city of Platteville, as well as the other municipal dues, as well as the counties, that we pay 90% of that to them. And I would be a full county, or excuse me, it's a technical college employee. The counties is a little bit different. They are calling it a loaned position and maybe a legal attorney can verify what exactly that means. I am covered under their umbrella, but I will still operate the corporation. The 501(c)(4) will still be an independent organization. And that is, of course, important, as I've heard people talk, discuss autonomy being very important to the corporation and its future. But in the county's case, I, every month, basically, we have to, we will be billed by the county for our, for our costs of being, having health insurance and retirement provided. And we will, you know, we will do so no matter the situation. Both of them are not necessarily, you know, without costs. So, but I will make a recommendation to my board. As I said, I'm very pleased with having multiple proposals in respects to, when I left, my office used to be at Southwest Tech. It is now at the UW Extension Office Building in Lancaster, near the fairgrounds. When I departed from Southwest Tech and moved over there in January, it was a better deal. It saved us money and always trying to figure ways to save money. And the ultimate, what really came out of it was then Dr. Wood, the president of Southwest Tech, reached out to me and says they were concerned that the corporation may not remain viable or that I would not be able to stay on staff without benefits. And he'd heard rumors that that affected and we had a discussion and that's what led to Southwest Tech throwing their hat in the ring, so to speak. So as I said, I'm very pleased with both proposals and we will make a decision tomorrow. My goal is to make that effective January 1st on the calendar, our calendar budget year. And that seems to be the cleanest and simplest. So one other thing, if I may, kind of give you an update on what the corporation's been up to. I handed out this. This will be tomorrow after we do the tour of Sasquatch Centennial Hall. I'm going to do a presentation. I have never done this in my 20, almost 23 years with the corporation. This is only three pages of the presentation itself, not to deter people from attending. Will be over 20 pages, but I will fly right through it. And one thing is being this on the, with Grant County Economic Development this long, you drive through a community and you start, you start reminiscing, reminiscing a bit. Well, I remember when that project came happen. I remember when that project, when that business came in. And these are just three slides that in, in the purpose of this is somewhat apropos as we get around budget time and because every budget year in the fall, late summer, it seems to be getting early and earlier now. The always the stand, the question asked of me is what do you, what have you done for us lately? There's has to be a shown ROI, return on investment. And I certainly understand that, sitting in your, your chair. I sit on a school board. I'm also on a town board. You have to have an ROI to continue to put money into something. And the, you know, the, the, these are only three of them, but I targeted down on property taxes and on payroll. Though this doesn't really demonstrate the payroll, the payroll's at the end of the presentation. Difficult to, well, there's easier ways to gauge economic development than other ways. If you really get into the details, it's, okay, a person's, how many times a dollar turns over within a community? They go to the store, that the store hires a person, et cetera. But I'm looking purely on property taxes. Now, these numbers are a little bit skewed because you have TIF, tax, but financing. This is assuming the numbers that I have on the Platteville one are assuming no TIF. And these are just a really quick and dirty of projects that I'm aware of that I've worked on. And I touched base on the industrial park expansion, L&amp;M corrugated. I was with Ms. Nichols. Ms. Nichols was a real estate broker on a Saturday. When we toured, I brought the Steve Lopes and his father and another accountant. And we were touring buildings in Grant County. And we toured on a Saturday. Like I said, I had my five or six-year-old daughter who is with me, who is now a senior at UW-Platteville with me. And we looked at the buildings and on my way back home after showing the buildings in Platteville, Cuba City, Lancaster, Steve Lopes called me and says, I want to talk to you about that Platteville building. And that, in that respects, then, how it worked was I handed the ball to George Kruger, who was the Pedic director at that time. Because it's one thing for me to float around at 10,000 feet and that's the reason why Grant County Economic Development was created, in essence, by Pedic. Tom Guyer, Pedic, said we needed a county presence because county has more ability to attract attention. And I, you'll find later that, I found out later that regions attract better, but we're all about the county and trying to get projects in here. But trying to, you know, get attention, bring in business, retain business. But it's better that, I'm glad that Platteville has the Pedic board. I'm glad the city of Platteville has you because without you, and that's really the part of my point on all this presentation, is that a community, I can't do anything without you. If you do not want economic development, if you do not want industrial development, there are communities that do not. And it can get you frustrating, but if you know that, you know, you have an industrial park because you choose to have an industrial park. You invest in infrastructure. That stuff doesn't fall from manna and install, if manna from heaven install itself. And, but you know, that's going to be some of the things that I may be talking about tomorrow. Emmy Roth case, Avista, Dick's Bakery, the Mountain View Dairy. Obviously, you saw me here last talking about CDBG with Mountain View. That's still progressing. US Highway 151, sitting down with Gabe Luffeholtz and the Secretary of Department of Transportation. They were going to do two and a half interchanges here and having a passionate discussion with them here about three full interchanges. And so, but the other things I'm just going to touch on if I have the time. We market the city and the industrial park. I really focus more on the industrial park. I will be honest. That is mine, that's my wheelhouse, so to speak. Business retention and attraction. That is what I do. Market. I'm going to be doing drone videos. I know I've been talking about this. I switched contractors yesterday because the contractor called me and said that we're not going to get this done. I'm doing four drone videos this year. One of Platteville, Cuba City, Dickieville, and Boscabel. I'm targeting my communities with larger industrial lands available to sale. And because that's where I'm seeing a lot more of my prospective businesses looking for larger tracts of land. Entrepreneur development with people like Maya Donahue at the Innovation Hub and Incubator. I serve on the incubator board. I'm on the Pedic board. We do revolving loans. I just SOS Road Rescue just finished out, repaid their loan in full to my office. And obviously, some of you know about the closed project, the mining museum here in town. I just had a phone conversation with Delta 3 and Eric Fleisch about that today. Can we get the project done yet this year? And that's a $300,000 bit of funding that I've brought in to try to get things, get the new roof on it, the roofs on it, but the masonry and tuck pointing and painting and the gutters. And we have now, I was thinking we had till Halloween to get it done. We have till the end of this year. Now, I don't think anybody's going to be painting in December, tuck pointing. And that was my point to the contractors or to Eric that we need to push this along. And even today, I had lunch with Carlos from Los Amigos and talked retention. Talked to him about supply chain. Finally, one of the things I think really you want me to be doing is exactly what in the marketing is right now, Platteville is one of the prospect for a very large manufacturing firm. I've talked to Adam a bit about this. It's a 50-plus acre, 50 to 100-acre prospect, 600,000 square foot building. I'm not going to go into any further details. There, I'm submitting three projects, sites within the county. Platteville has two of them, but one's technically not in the city yet, but would have to be annexed in. But to find larger tracts of land is a large challenge, especially in the Southwest Wisconsin Driftless Region. But you have one of the biggest pieces and one of the nicest with the, what would I call the Cummins property, which may not be the correct term to use, but we all know what that means. And, but that's what, what some of the things that I've been working on. So thank you for your support for all the years. I will entertain questions.
Questions of Ron. Ron, many times, economic development and people who work in economic development are not necessarily seen and recognized, but we do appreciate all that you do for us.
Well, I appreciate that, but that's.
And we appreciate the fact that I think since I've been on the council, I don't remember that there's been an increase in our dues.
2006 would have been the last time you had an increase in your dues.
I think that was maybe just before I was on the council.
I don't, I know I've seen you, you and Eileen have been on. And Eileen is a past, currently serving as past president of my corporation. But I, as I stated, I try to, I find funding from outside sources from doing block grants to other administration. And that's how I bridge the gap. If you look at our dues, our total dues is approximately $118,000 a year. My budget this year was $150,000 because I had two, in essence, two people working. Obviously, Darlene is retired. But you know, tourism is another thing. And I know Kathy Kopp and I had a meeting, we're in a meeting today on that very matter in part. But we had to bridge that gap. And currently, right now, this year, I'll have approximately, well, if things go well, knock on wood, we get our funding in, we'll be approximately $100,000 in carryover. And obviously, we, I pride myself on that. But those days, and Eileen will tell you, we've had some very almost heated discussions at our exec committee on the future of this corporation as, because I don't, I will tell you, Barb, I don't believe that I'm going to be able to maintain that, that fund to be able to bridge that gap. There's going to be a time, I think, my estimate right now is within, within five years, that my funding, my excess, my gap funding is going to expire, run out. Because the state is cutting back on block grants. CDBG block grants are being cut back. Revolving loan, the county's revolving loan was taken away as well as Cuba Cities. And I manage the county's revolving loan as well as the city of Boscabels. And it's, so the days of being able to come in and say, we're not going to have a dues increase may be limited to, and the strategy is right now, I'll be honest with the council, is we're talking next year, potentially asking for a moderate, like a 1%. Obviously, at 100, or 19,000 would be approximately $190. But we are going, we're having this discussion now. And as I said, there is disagreement on that. But I'm hoping, you know, make it palatable to the boards. But, and I understand the situation of this city with a TID, TID number six. And that's how we are financed. Then when TID number six, you know, run is closed, you know, where are we financed? And, you know, that's why, you know, ROI is always very important to me. That's why I always try to demonstrate my value. And I apologize for being lapsed sometime or lax, you know, on that sometimes. Other questions?
Any other questions? Ken?
I have a question. You have two proposals here. And the Southwest Tech College says to hire, employ, and employ the GED executive director. So, so in this proposal, it sounds like they're saying one person. How about any staff people, with any staff people be included with Southwest Tech proposal?
Well, two paragraphs down from that, Ken, you'll notice that they talk about support staff. And they will be, they're willing to provide support staff. So at their cost, that's what makes this interesting is the tech college is willing to support, offer a support staff at their costs. Whereas the county's proposal, if I go, if whatever support staff I need from the county, I have to pay for it $27 an hour.
Okay, the county one says this is memorandum of understanding for staff management services. So that would be you plus any others.
Correct, but I have to pay for that.
You would have to pay?
I would have to pay.
Corporation.
The corporation would have to pay.
Okay. So now.
You're hitting the nail on the head, Ken, of the two, trying to make them apples and apples to look at them that way. They're not. And to try to cut through that, the assistant, the support staff is the, is the, is the critical really where the, the challenge comes to try to divert, you know, try to pick out which one's better.
Okay, and then what if Southwest Technical College is selected? What happens to the board of directors as far as what's going to be their role that they're doing now?
That's a good question, Ken. How, my understanding is, you know, I, I can tell you the document reads as the document reads. And that's how I was always trained for my law training at UW-Platteville. The document has to stand on their own two feet. From talking to the technical college, they're saying the board would still exist. The technical college would not have a board seat. They do not want to buy a board seat. They would, they're not anticipating that. But, you know, there is, there is some things they have a say on when my replacement is selected and I have to report to the technical college. I would, my recommendation was to report to the CFO if I was going to report to someone of the technical college. The, the tech college is one, doesn't really elaborate on that in writing, but from talking to the staff and to the presidents, the representatives of Southwest Tech, the board would still remain in place as it is now.
And then you, you refer to what the cost would be to the city of Platteville. We're now paying approximately $19,000 some for our yearly payment.
Correct.
So you did make, I believe, set a number for how much it's going to increase.
Not yet. No, if I, if I come in, if I come in, if I'm not requesting an increase for 2023, it'll be, I can tell you right now, Ken, my request to you, to the city of Platteville, the dues for next year will be exactly the same as it is right now, exactly the same as was in 2008, $19,159. Now, we are envisioning that we may need to increase it into the future. But the technical college does stipulate in there about inflation, adjustments for inflation, which in their proposal, so they get 90%, but I cannot increase my dues or, that's not how it is. They cannot increase their percentage more than inflation. So it's, as I said, sometimes it's difficult to cut through this and put them side by side. But you're hitting, you're spotting the main points of concern that I have.
Now, another thing, you're, I don't go to many, to many of these meetings, but what I see is that I believe in more reporting. Now, you list things here and some of these things you can't, you can't convey to us in public.
True.
And so, but we could get them as confidential information as to what's going on. So my point is, I'd like to be more informed as to what's going on, what has taken place in the past.
I'm fine with that.
Somebody that's been on, you know, as a board of, board of directors, you know. I'm looking for more information.
I appreciate that and I can do that for you. I can do that. But the fact that you hit the nail on the head that we are in a public meeting right now. And there's things even that this, what I discussed, what I said tonight, I pulled back on because I know that I have a couple reporters sitting in the room and that this is a public meeting. I talked to Adam in confidence and I will talk to individuals that it's not subject to open records. That's why I'm a 501(c)(4) not-for-profit corporation is I don't have to comply with open records requests. I may be viewed as quasi-governmental, but I have two attorney generals' opinions, one Republican, one Democrat back in the 1980s that says that I do not have to comply with open records. And that's the reason why is, but I have no problem talking to you, Ken, as long as, you know, it doesn't become an official or a public record or any member of this council.
Could you make a supply to the whole council?
I could do it to Adam. Well, I could tell, I'd have to think on that. Yeah, I can. I could. But I would not send it in an email or, no, I can't. Or I prefer to tell you personally, Ken, honestly, because I know that there's no paper trail. But you know, that's, we can have the discussion and I will talk to, as I have a good rapport with several members of this council and you tell me what you want and I'll get it to you. I don't have any, I don't, I trust you, Ken.
Could you operate occasionally, when I say occasionally?
Oh, yeah, I believe I can. Is it, is that a closed session matter? Now, when you, we were talking, you know, that's more of a question if we, you know, land negotiations and things such as that, incentives, absolutely. That's a closed session item. But things like this, if that's an appropriate closed session and I bow to the powers that be that know better on that than I do. But if that's the thing, I am glad to do that.
Matter of being informed.
Absolutely. And that's what, and I know that I'm lax at times, as I said, of being open, you know, giving you the details, giving you reports, regular reports, and I need to be doing that better. After this many years, I should know better. So absolutely. But things such as that we, that you and I would consider confidential, we just have to safeguard that information.
And that's all I have for questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. No, that's fine. Thanks, Ken.
I would just also note that, as Ron said, there are monthly meetings and they are throughout the county. And the one this month is in Platteville. And the information that's provided at that meeting is put into a newsletter or a record of the meeting. And Adam has been sending that out to the council members and it's certainly available to anybody else that would like to see it. But it's a very interesting meeting because everybody that's a member of the corporation comes in and tells what they've been doing in their communities. And you really learn a lot about what's happening in Grant County and you get some good ideas, quite frankly, and we work together.
I believe those two are the designated representatives on my board.
And then Kathy also.
Kathy's on the county board.
Kathy's, yeah.
Kathy's one of the county board representatives. I have three reps on my county board. Kathy is one of the three.
And Eileen is the vice president of the corporation.
Past president, past president, right? Okay, I get confused.
Oh, did I say vice president? Past president, okay. Well, yeah, well, you didn't know she took that position over this week, did you?
No.
Okay. Ron, thank you very much and we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, the next presentation on our agenda tonight is a presentation by Ellers Public Finance Advisors. Dave Ferris and Brian Raymer are here to give, responding to our financial advising services, RFP. Adam, anything to say?
Yeah, so again, this is kind of the, the second part of the process here. So we narrowed down the three firms down to two. If you remember at the last meeting, we had Robert W. Bear gave a presentation. And now we have requested that Ellers come. And again, we have Dave and Brian here and they're going to kind of go over briefly a little bit about the services that they provide. And then what will happen is the game plan then is after their presentation, we're going to reconvene the kind of subcommittee that was created, kind of talk about both options. And then at the next meeting here, there, this will be back as action and potentially then the council will have a recommendation from that committee and can then make a decision if they want more time, if they want additional information or if they want to select a municipal advisor. So I will pitch it over to you guys to take it away.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, usually when Brian and I walk in here, we're talking about numbers or things like that. So we're actually really happy to have the chance to come before you and talk not only about what services we already provide, but kind of tell you about some of the things that we don't provide that maybe the city could take advantage of. So in our proposal, we had quite a few things in there about things we do for other communities and we'll touch on those a little bit tonight when we go through our proposal. So thank you once again for giving us the opportunity to actually brag a little bit about some of the things that we don't do for you that, that could be possible services that you take. The first page, or actually second page, is just a little bit of information about Ellers. Right now, we have about 80-plus advisors and that's split between the Roseville office in Minnesota and the Waukesha office in Wisconsin. The team that services the city for city of Platteville is out of the Waukesha office. Brian and I both work there. We come from different directions every morning, but we land in the same place pretty much. So we have, basically, we're 100% employee-owned. We have an ESOP. So we have, you know, everybody that's on the team really has a vested effort in making Ellers a place you really want to work and want to have everything be, you know, up to high quality. And, you know, we, we definitely have a lot of people that have different specialties. So, you know, Brian, even though he does things like issuing debt, helping issue debt and then TIF districts, also has a really strong background with utilities and has really done a great job in the years that he's been at Ellers to bring out probably one of the highest knowledge bases of utilities that I've seen. I was at Baker Tilly. I saw utility practice and he definitely digs into the details and knows his stuff. So you've got a good one that, that got to talk to the utility commission today. So hopefully, he wowed them. I'm going to turn it over to Brian just to talk about some of our services.
Sure. Thank you, Dave. And I'll echo what Dave said. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Dave. And I'll echo what Dave said. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, so we're going to talk about uh, what we've done and then we're going to kind of go into our approach. So the cover letter of our proposal kind of highlights some of these items, as you may have seen. Uh, but we have advised on a lot of debt issues. Uh, we've been ranked number one uh, in the state of Wisconsin for competitive bond sales. Um, I think it's important to highlight that um, as we present, you know, the, a financing plan to the city will look at going to the open market, will look at other, you know, state or federal programs as they're available to you and identify, you know, which one is most suitable um, for you. And with that, just a lot of times the competitive bond deal is the most suitable as it does provide a way similar to bidding a public project, you know, for a road project, you're, you're looking for that lowest cost of financing. Um, truly that's been our approach is finding the most suitable need for the client in terms of what sort of uh, debt instrument you're going to use. Um, and so that's why it's kind of led us to be the leader in terms of those competitive bond sales. We've also completed a significant amount of long-term financial plans. You've had uh, experience with our financial management uh, planning process, both on, you know, the general fund and governmental fund side and as well as the utilities, more specifically the utilities commission today. So it's front of mind. Um, and then also we just wanted to highlight the two hundred plus fiscal studies. The reason being is uh, if you're ever in need uh, in help in terms of understanding what those utility rates should be. We have uh, you know, people in-house, including myself uh, that can help complete those tasks. Uh, you know, and even if it's as simple as a question to us in terms of how does the PSC think about these things? And the city's actually done that uh, last year when you went through the conventional rate case. I know Nicola and Sheila both reached out with questions on the public service commission process and you know, that's kind of where we can add that value that we think is unparalleled to other firms. Um, we've also completed a significant amount of economic development projects. Um, we average, if you'll see in the proposal, about, you know, forty-five to fifty percent of the tax increment districts created in the state. So we do a lot of it. Um, we also do the majority of uh, pro forma review and that's basically proving the but for test and making sure that we're not over incentivizing developers as we consider a project that could be coming to the city. So we have uh, in particular, three experts, you know, at the city's disposal, should you want to review um, that analysis or have uh, you know, third-party review of your own internal analysis when determining the but for test. And then finally, we have a significant amount of investment uh, in terms of assets under management of above two point oh million. Uh, so that's or two point oh billion, excuse me. And so these are all growing as well. I think if we kind of had a chart on how much we do each year in each of these uh, areas, you would see that there is significant growth in each one of them and how we do this is shown on the next slide. We started out as a debt issuance practice. Uh, Ellers has been around since nineteen fifty-five. Um, ma- the majority of work again being debt issuance and how we ended up uh, covering all of these services was actually, you know, born out of client need. Um, a lot of clients would say, you know, for example, in terms of investments, what do we do with our bond proceeds? And so we realize, okay, maybe there's an area there that we can best advise um, our community even further. You know, what should we do about post, post issuance compliance in terms of after we issue the debt? And making sure that we're compliant with everything on that the SEC requires. And so with that, um, you know, we've, we've found avenues to better serve clients. Um, and I think the reason that you'll see us kind of expand into uh, or have more branches than other firms as well is because one, we tend to hire people who have worked in local government before. And uh, like Dave said, he has significant experience as a former, former finance director. Um, you'll, we kind of speak to that later on a slide. Uh, but that said, so we, we understand the needs, but we also listen. And I think that can be one of the biggest values um, that you'll see if you're to ask other communities uh, who've maybe used two different firms, one of us and one of them being us. Um, you would say that, you know, Ellers is very responsive. They take pride in what they do and they believe in what they say that they do and how they do it. And so we get that done. Secondly, because we're, we're independent and what that means is we don't represent any other entities, but government entities. We don't represent private developers. We, we don't uh, we're not a broker dealer. Um, we are an independent municipal advisory firm. Uh, other firms may say that, you know, there's, there's value to being a broker dealer as you may have um, you know, a trading desk next door. That said, we don't work with just one trading desk. We work with a lot of trading desks nationally. And we take consideration in terms of what other trading desk may be thinking. So um, that said, it can be important to have that independence as we like to deliver unbiased value to the city. So with that, you can kind of see all the services that we provide, but we just kind of wanted to speak to how and uh, why we do those.
So a little bit more about what we have for uh, personnel that, that handles some of the services we have. So we have twelve municipal advisors that have a combined experience of about a hundred and fifty years now. I, I think that that's actually a little short because on my own I have thirty and I know we have twelve people. So I'm thinking that's got to be a little short, but, but uh, you know, it's, it's interesting because when I was at Wannakee as a finance director for sixteen years, Ellers was my uh, municipal advisor and, and the depth of knowledge that they have as far as TIF and, and debt issuance uh, was always something that I was in, that I was impressed with. And when they asked me to work with them, I was, I was happy to join on. So you know, where you have two people that can do that work, we're also supported by some people that have been doing it for twenty-five plus years that have a knowledge base that goes, you know, way deep and you always have somebody that you can go to if you just run into that really weird item. So we always have quite a bit of uh, uh, knowledge base to turn back to. Uh, as far as fiscal consultants, we have some people that, that basically, including myself, that, that we, you know, we do a lot of long-range plans. I've been doing your long-range plans for probably the last three or four years. Uh, Dawn was involved when I first started with, working with the city and, and I've carried that on since our, our dear Dawn did retire. Uh, she came here and, and you know, I think the mid two thousand fifteen, two thousand teens and, and she, you know, walked into the city, gave you a bunch of looks at what she was seeing and gave you kind of a path to, to really look at how you could get to a more healthy state. And I think you really started to, to get to that point and, and really we're at the point where we really want to see that through and see where you're going to go. Uh, once you can get out from underneath some of those things that have been holding you back. So you know, from a selfish standpoint, you know, we want to stay here with you because we still think that we have unfinished business to watch you guys uh, get through and, and to, to have yourself be in a financial state that, you know, maybe seven years ago was something you're kind of going, what are we going to do? So uh, you know, as far as disclosure agents, uh, I, you know, we have some people that are specialized in reporting, you know, things to uh, the regulatory body, body called Emma. There's a, a site where you can find all of your official statements, your financial statements, um, other important obligations that might be out there and they make sure that you do that timely and that it's, it's complete and accurate. So uh, they're very important as far as making sure that what people look at you like for ratings, see what you need to see. Uh, investment advisors, uh, we have, I, I think it's probably more than two investment advisors. Actually, I think we have two out of our office potentially. Um, but we actually have two people in our office that really have been gaining a lot of ground as far as Wisconsin municipalities and investments. It's something that, you know, as a company, we've kind of taken the approach of uh, one Ellers. And that means that when Brian and I are out in the field and we see somebody that's maybe sitting on a lot of cash and isn't investing it, isn't like maximizing their interest earnings and helping their budget, we actually look out for that and we're actually bringing that back, introducing them to Tammy. And I know Tammy has worked with the city as well. Um, and, and she has been able to help those communities earn more interest and not, and you know, this market where your, your inflation is going crazy, you need some revenues that are helping you out and maximizing your interest uh, is, is one of those. Then we have a few arbitrage people. We kind of look at them funny because they're a little bit strange, but they like to, they like to take, uh, they like to get excited about arbitrage, which means that you've got bond proceeds that you're investing. Uh, and, and hopefully you're investing in something that's wise, that's not making too much money. Because then they'll have to come in and do an analysis of, you know, whether or not you're going to owe the IRS, but they're, they're very smart guys. Uh, one of them gets very giddy about his discussions on arbitrage, but uh, um, you know, we're all very passionate about what we do. So a little bit about uh, your advisory team and I have not been clicking this, have I? Which one is it? Just one more. So Brian and I are your leads. It, it says that I'm their primary uh, uh, person in the, in the proposal, but really when it comes to the city staff, they reach out to both of us and, and with Brian's experience in utilities, you know, we're really both primary uh, uh, relationship managers for the city. So we share this responsibility. We enjoy doing your work. And really, so you can see what we're about, you know, I started out in, in the nineties as an auditor for Virchow Crow. So I've been doing government for basically about thirty years now. Um, I spent sixteen years in a seat like, like Nicola did. Uh, I, I know what that side of the desk is like and, and some of the things that I learned through that process. Um, I've been able to bring along to Ellers and, and that's why financial management planning is something that I'm really strong at is because you know, the, you know, in the case of the city, you've got a couple of things where the staff has said, we kind of want to see things this way or this way. And then I've been able to actually adapt our model to be able to do that. So it's something that, you know, throw me some more challenges and I'm happy to try to come up with things that we can share with the council and then you can take that as part of your management plan and, and see how you can take that to make yourself healthier or, or to see how things are going to look. Um, I think I'll turn it over to Brian to kind of talk about his experience then.
I'm a little younger than Dave. Uh, I don't have uh, you know, the long history only, only due to uh, age, uh, but also just know that um, I've been with Ellers uh, six years. Uh, I started as an intern uh, after completing my MBA through the University of Wisconsin Milwaukee. Uh, that had a concentration in finance. Um, and had no idea what I wanted to do in terms of finance. I just really like solving long, complicated problems. Um, and ultimately found a spot that I never want to leave. So um, that said, I, I, I plan to be at Ellers um, as long as they'll have me. Um, and as long as the city will, will have Ellers. So I would plan to stay here um, and be working with you um, beyond, you know, again, Dave's a little older. He might, he might be retiring at some point. So before me. Uh, but that said, uh, mainly my experience started in utility rate studies. Um, you know, that, that business was growing very fast. Um, that said, it's um, been something that we've been very involved in. Um, in terms of like rate cases filed with the PSC, we, we handle uh, you know, top three kind of annually with that, with myself being the lead on the majority of those rate cases. Uh, we complete a lot of sewer rate studies. Uh, we issue a lot of revenue bonds. It's imperative to understand the, the revenue stream uh, that you will need in order to service that debt as well as meet your bond covenants. And so that's where uh, my experience um, has been able to help the city. Uh, so now we're going to kind of go through some of our accomplishments uh, that we've achieved together.
So the first item I actually kind of talked about a little bit with you already is that, you know, we came in here in, in mid two thousand teens and, and helped put together a long-range financial plan, which resulted in you adopting new policies and procedures and led, you know, led to where you're kind of coming into where you're starting to see some of that health. Um, Brian will talk a little bit about the deregulation.
So in terms of the financial management plan and, and the utility side, um, we had a meeting. I believe it was August of twenty nineteen over at the police building in which the question was asked. Um, do we need to be regulated? Is what, why is the sewer utility regulated? And I kind of walked through the deregulation process and said that walking through it with another community, I don't see why we would be um, unless the PSC has previously told you that you should be. So I provided some information um, to the utility commission at that time and Nicola as well about deregulation and the city, you know, followed through with that. That provides you a lot of financial flexibility. It removes a negative check mark in terms of the rating report and the inability to raise rates at your whim uh, versus a regulated entity. And then in addition to that, um, we did help the city ensure compliance with the sewer equipment replacement fund. Um, this is a fund that's restricted acts, uh, restricted assets. Um, you're not allowed um, to spend it on uh, everything but uh, equipment that's under twenty uh, years of asset life. Um, while there's no uh, true uh, penalties towards that. What the problem can be is you have to then take unrestricted funds and restrict them um, at the point at which you issue a clean water fund loan. So we walk through that process as part of um, you know, some of the things that we've done uh, together with the city um, for the utilities portion.
And then another, another item that I also touched about earlier is, is, you know, as, as we've gone through the financial management plans, uh, there's always been kind of the, could we do it this way? Could we do it that way? And, and there was, I, I think the first year Nicola that you, you came in and we met when we were at the Ostoff and we were kind of talking about how we could actually streamline, you know, that the policy that said you could only borrow the next year, how much it paid off in debt. And, and so with those kind of things, we were able to tweak uh, really the model to kind of be tailored to you. And, and you know, with, with your, your situation right now is, you know, we run kind of three different scenarios for you. Most places that we do financial management plans, we only do one scenario. So we've been tailoring things to your, to your, what you guys needed to get the information you need to see. So it's something that we take great uh, pride in being able to be flexible in, in creating those projections. The other thing that we, we work with staff and, and the city with is, is assisting you in maintaining your double A minus bond rating. You know, it's a process that we go through to get through the, the debt issuance and, and getting prepared to talk to, to the S and P people. And so when uh, we're on calls, if the city needs us to be able to talk to certain things, we're there. Uh, we provide information to uh, the rating agency as well as backup the staff with whatever they need to be able to also uh, prepare for that. Did you want to say anything about rating for the utilities?
No.
Okay. So then uh, moving on to the next page. Uh, looking forward, some things that we, we know that are kind of on the horizon is, you know, that we've been under the thumb of the debt capacity policy that we've had uh, because of what was, you know, what was in place for debt structure and what was happening with the TIFs using the debt capacity. And so, you know, it's something that I know that even a year ago, when we were like earlier in the, in the season, uh, I ran a couple of things for, for Nicola and, and it kind of pointed that we're having some times where, where you're able to do more than just that policy where you can only borrow the same amount as you paid off. So it's something that, you know, we're able to, you know, look forward in the, in the next financial management plans to actually start to show you that breaking out from being held down on how much you're doing.
Then looking forward in terms of the utility forecasts, uh, for those of you that are on the utility commission, this might be a little bit of a repeat from earlier um, this afternoon. But really we're trying to look to maybe augment some of that uh, financial uh, planning. And one of the things that I spoke to this afternoon was talking about the total debt service of both the water and sewer utility. This has been, you know, since twenty nineteen that I've been working on the financial management plan for the utilities, trying to make sure that that debt service doesn't spike, but that we're also building in capacity um, for future debt service um, so that we can continue to get the replacements done for an aging system. And um, while we try to do that, the balance of course is to have the quickest amortization possible to lower our interest costs. So there is a balance there, but again, this has been um, an ongoing process. It would continue uh, to be uh, that for us. And as I spoke to the utility commission uh, this afternoon, you know, trying to get it sooner than that ten-year window and, and closer to a five-year window in that opportunity starting um, in twenty thirty. Um, beyond that, then also looking at how you're setting rates, another item that I brought up to the commission uh, this afternoon was that your future water rate increases are only allowed under certain windows of opportunity for the public service commission. One uh, benefit that we can bring is uh, you know, you would have a future conventional rate case because you can't use certain simplifies after a time period of five years. Um, we, we think there might be a benefit of actually submitting an application to the public service commission lower than that benchmark rate of return that comes uh, with a heavy workload and uh, burden of proof. Um, and we think we are the firm in, in order to produce that.
The other item that we, we have not actually provided any service to the city at this point, but we have, you know, as, as Brian talked about earlier, we do, you know, almost fifty percent of the We do, you know, almost fifty percent of the TIF creations and amendments in the in the state. And so we have a big knowledge base that can help you if you're moving forward with any TIF creations or amendments. And we're available to provide that that assistance to you as well.
And then lastly, as we look at how much fund levy limits are and our inability. To pay for the services that we need to provide. And the potential for looking to increase services. How do we get through a levy limit referendum process? This is something that we just presented on at WGFOA last week. I myself, along with the actual PR firm. CEO and we spoke to the process in terms of we're battling. You know, CPI that's growing faster than that new construction over the past couple of years. And how do municipalities maintain their level of services? So kind of if the city were to need that or decide that that was a route they would like to go in. We do feel like we are ready to provide that to the city and and help in that effort. And then the lastly. How can we do all of this is that, you know, as as we identified earlier, we we like to be client value oriented. How we accomplish that is first by listening. And so we like to understand what the challenges are. I remember speaking to Dawn about the city, the first time that she brought me in. And she remembered the first conversation that she had with the city in saying that these were the goals that we had at that time. And then these are going to be the goals that we're going to look to beyond that. So she was already thinking about. The future with her not there. And that's how Dave and I both operate as well is that. It is not, you know, Dave working with the city, it's ours working with the city. We take that to heart and that that starts with listening. And then secondly, that starts with collaboration. You know, it's been a privilege to work with Nicola over the past. Four or five years and then working with Adam more recently. We feel we have a really good relationship with staff back and forth in terms of executing the various engagements efficiently. I will say I get very clean information just from, you know, on on what I receive. And it's also easy to, you know, bounce ideas off of them in terms of, hey, this is where we're, we see this going is is this appropriate in terms of where you see that going? So it's it's truly a collaborative effort and not just our recommendations, but also recommendations of city staff. And then that through those recommendations, you know, comes that delivery. We want to make sure that we're providing that proactive. Accurate and independent advice, you know, that we've been speaking to throughout this presentation. And then finally, to not stop that effort. The reflection kind of comes in terms of when you even just kind of look at an example like a financial management plan. We don't just produce looking into the future. We also look in the past to understand what are some of the things that we could have. Could have done or what are some of the things we should have done? And then understanding what that launching point is into the future. So we would be privileged to continue serving the city. But we would certainly, we can't do that without hearing from you. So we would, we would like to engage in some question and answer if you have any.
Questions of Brian or David? Brian, we put you through quite a few questions on water and sewer today.
We like questions.
And he's still standing.
And he's still standing. Questions? Okay.
We must have talked enough. Thank you very much.
Safe travels on your way back east. And thank you. All right. We're now moving into the part of our agenda, the first part, consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you want any separate discussion or action on any item. Among those, the council minutes from September thirteenth regular meeting. Payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I have three. I'm appointing Kevin Wonderland to a. Three year term on the board of board of appeals zoning. Appointing Michael Albies to a term expiring. May first, twenty twenty five on the Historic Preservation Commission. And appointing Kelly Sponsler to fill an unexpired term on the library board. That will end May first, twenty twenty three. Licenses in your, we have class B combination beer and liquor license for. N A T C G Jenkins to LLC Platteville. Ashley Jenkins to be the agent. At Steve's Pizza Palace and one and two year operator licenses to serve and sell sell alcohol as were in your packet. There's a parade permit for the Platteville Home High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October seven. It's a two P M. Start. We have resolution twenty two dash twenty one. Application for exemption from the levy of any county library tax. And a resolution twenty two twenty two proclaiming October twenty twenty two as United Nations mark.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Candace will vote. Killian? Nichols? Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next are citizens comments, observations and petitions, if any. And I've had no one register to speak. But I do believe that the city is involved in a special event coming up on October nine.
Ninth, we are, yes.
So Adam, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So there is, it's called the Taste of Platteville. And it's something over the next two weeks here, we're going to hear a lot more promotion about it. It's is a, it's part of the Platteville Economic Development Partners. So that is not only the city, that's our Platteville Main Street, our Chamber of Commerce, Grand County Economic Development is involved in that. As well as the university, also the Platteville Business Incubator, the school district. And what we wanted to do is this is all part of one of our strategic planning goals was to try to have more of a joint effort with these organizations and try to do more. Kind of promotional and marketing opportunities. So this is kind of our first attempt at that. So it is called the Taste of Platteville. It's kind of a two events. It's the Taste of Platteville. And there's also a pickleball tournament. So the Platteville Area Pickleball Association is putting on a tournament. We just saw the updates today. They have about forty participants that have already signed up. So they're full, which is awesome. And now they're on the waiting list. So that's great. So they're going to have two different. Kind of competitions going on in amateur group and then a more of a professional group. And so they'll be going on from twelve to two and then from two to four thirty. And then from two to four is more of the Taste of Platteville event. So that's at the Broski Center. This is all happening at Legion Park. Where we are going to have a bunch of different food vendors from the area. So we definitely have Culvers is going to be there. A and W, we've got Seven Hills, I believe Los Amigos is possibly looking at that as well as we have a couple of different. Other vendors as well. Pioneer Suites is going to be involved. And we're still looking for anybody that wants to participate in that. So if you're interested, you can absolutely contact. Myself, Wayne with the Chamber or Tammy ends with Main Street. But basically what it's going to be is a dollar per ticket and each item, the kind of vendor has the option to, it's maxed out at three dollars. And essentially you'll be able to kind of sample and check out everything going on from two to four and then vote on. Three of the best kind of food items that you had. And there'll also be a bunch of service organizations. So Tide is actually looking at our Task Force for Inclusion, Diversity and Equity. Is looking at having a table there and just kind of being able to promote some of the things that they've been working on. As well as I know the incubator is going to be there. And I think Kate Cozio is working on actually pickle themed costume. So check out that. So it'll be exciting. But yeah, we're we're definitely excited and we'll see how it goes and hope we can build on it. So.
Okay, does any other council member have any other item they want to stress? That's the only, that's the only one I know of that's going on. We could ask Mr. Rob, Bob. How are we doing on the stone shelter?
Cutting the doorways, we have to order the doors special because it'll be all ADA compliant.
When it's all said and done, it'll be very well done. But it is, it's it's a little bit of a project. So.
Okay. So later, all right. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to reports. The reports that were in your packet. Were the Commission on Aging Minutes from May and June. Kathy, any additions? No. Water and Sewer Commission, Ken and Eileen, these are from June and July.
No addition.
Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No addition.
Airport Commission Kathy from August and September.
Nothing to add.
Community Safe Routes, Jason?
Nothing to add.
And the Museum Board, Eileen.
Well, I have to mention that there are three wonderful events going on in the month of October. At the museum. So October tenth to the sixteenth is considered to be Wisconsin Science Festival Week. And the museum on Wednesday, October twelfth is offering free admission. So come to the museum on October twelfth, fine tours and train rides. And there will be a demonstration of glass bead making. Then on October twenty ninth. Main Street has their Sweet Treats event. And during that time, the museum will be providing free train rides for children. So that'd be another opportunity for you to come and ride the train. And finally, October thirty first is Community Free Day. That's the last day. Sorry? Is is the last day that the museum is actually open officially, the the season ends. So anyone who has a Platteville resident, if you have an ID that says you live in Platteville, that day is free. So come to the museum, the Jameson Museum in the in the mine and. There are some wonderful new exhibits. So if you haven't been there in a while, it's well worth coming this time and and seeing some of those new exhibits. That's just October. Then we could go into November, but we'll save that for next month.
Eileen, aren't you also having some kind of major fundraiser that kicks off on?
We are having a major fundraiser. Eric, would you like to talk to that?
Thank you. Each year, the Friends of the Mining and Rallo Jameson Museums, which is a five oh one C three. Nonprofit organization that supports the museum and all its endeavors has an annual fund. That it builds to support direct operational expenses for the museum as well as a variety of wonderful initiatives, including scholarships for school field trips. To the museum and special projects. Including capital projects and actually. In preparation for. A capital campaign to support the construction of a site and facility comprehensive plan, a. Platteville Community Member has offered a twenty five thousand dollar challenge grant. So that any gift made between now and December first will be matched dollar for dollar. Up to twenty five thousand to achieve two goals simultaneously. One will be to complete the annual fund for the coming year's operations and two. To fund a special capital campaign feasibility study to set us off on the right foot. So everyone is always very generous with the making a gift of any size, small or large, and would be gift. Matched dollar for dollar between now and December first. Yeah. And and thank you so much for mentioning the Wisconsin Science Festival. We've been excited to participate in that for a few years. This year is actually the International Year of Glass. And we've got a special new exhibit that'll be rolled out for that week and will remain up for the year called The Art and Science of Glass. So come and check it out. Thank you very much.
Since they're talking along there, I have a question. It was in the city manager's report, weekly report to us. And I think it came, it came from the Parks Director and it said. Out of out of compliance properties for decades and so forth, but I didn't know what that meant. And I wanted to bring it up because. He listed it. And so I'm trying to figure out what you mean.
We now have a compliance officer. That who, and I'll let Howard speak to that a little bit more, but. She reacts to any complaints for private property. And she'll go around and make a report. She'll ask them to clean the property. If they don't clean the property. Then we will, the Parks Department will get notice from her. And we'll go and mow and clean the garbage and trash and. So sometimes the projects are extensive. As there has been properties that haven't been maintained for probably a decade or more. And I'll let the city manager explain which properties those would be. But that is, that's what we do. Some of our our projects that we have to take time for.
And you started that when?
We've been doing that for, before I got here.
Through four years.
Well, yes, but. The way it was worded, it sounded like it was something new.
No, just part of the part of our activities or duties, I should say.
Well, we have a number of properties around here that look. On the bad side.
Well, any civilian resident can file a complaint and.
Well, are these, are these going to be properties that? That you go and do them? Or does the citizen of the city of Platteville or a resident have to point them out to you and ask you to do it?
Howard can answer that logistics.
They're they're actually both. We have a code enforcement officer. Who shares duties. Under my department and under Joe's department for different code enforcement activities. What what Director Lau is talking about is. Is for tall grass ordinance, which would generally be under me. Our code enforcement officer does go around. Periodically spec properties. As part of their duties. But also receives complaints from citizens and and checks those out. As far as the other portion of the code enforcement officer's duties, that's under Joe.
But I think the problem with this is that you're asking the public to turn in the problems.
As I've stated. The code enforcement officer does go out and and do some. Enforcement compliance inspections. But a lot of times it's the residents who who notice these things also. And we have that ability. They do not have to give a name. They just need to. Provide an address of where the where the suspected violation is. And the code enforcement officer goes out and verifies it. And if it's valid, then. Then the enforcement procedures go from there.
Sometimes people do not like to turn in their neighbors. Because this may lead to bad feelings. And so. I see that as a problem. This idea of turning in the turning in the the problem from a citizen, and I think this this is. This is a.
That's just one other notification.
This is the weak thing that's being followed as far as procedure.
You're misinterpreting the procedure.
I I think I think we need to have a discussion. Offline on some of this because in the past, we've had city staff. Very aggressively enforce. Things like the tall grass ordinance and and things like that. And we had citizens complain to the council. That we were too aggressive in enforcing this. And so we've done this pendulum effect on a number of occasions. And I think that. Overall, we've probably done a pretty decent job of of doing. Enforcement by the code enforcement officer and receiving complaints. If there are ways that we can improve, then let's discuss this.
Well, basically, the situation to me, and I see is that you're not going out there as far as making compliance. You're, you're depending upon citizens to make, to comply. And now Bob is shaking his head.
No, because, so they, and, and part of this too is because this does end also into some legal issues. So there is some caution, I think, as all of us as staff are. A lot of these issues end up in court. Because what we can enforce, obviously, is the city, is if we're driving by and we can see it, but that does not necessarily give us the right to get out of our car and start walking into the back of somebody's property. So a lot of that does have to be, we have to see something that is definitely within the ordinance, and we can enforce that. Where the complaints come, where we may find out, I think, just as you indicated, Ken, it could be years, is if it's in somebody's backyard, and obviously, is any pretty, our code enforcement officer is driving by or walking by or looking at the property, they're seeing the front of the yard. If there's something going on, particularly in the back of the yard, that typically is when we get a complaint from a neighbor. Because either it's, there's something piling up, and it's usually not, you know, we're not talking one can of soda or something. It is multiple months or years. And just as you said, there may be one neighbor that's next to them that doesn't care, and then that person moves out, and the person that comes in there doesn't want that. So that's when we get the complaints. If we obviously are enforcing something and we see it, we'll definitely notify that. But it does get into a very legal area that we have to be careful on. So that's where there is a little bit of legality here that we want to be cautious on when we're talking about properties and property owners and timelines and everything like that.
Well, looking at some of the properties, I would say that some of these properties are substandard. And we had a picture or two appear in, in the paper, and if you go back to the, to the property, it looks about the same. Now, I think you're that one, you're trying to get compliance by going to court or whatever.
Yep. And that's typically what happens is there's the, you know, we give them X amount of days to fix it. If they don't, we come out, and typically then, fortunately, we have habitual issues where it's consistent. Some of them go, you know, can, and then some of them go to the legal process where it goes to court.
Well, those are my comments.
Okay, that concludes the reports that were in the packet. We'll now move into the action portion of our agenda. And the first action item is Resolution 22-23 Authorized Representative for Environmental Improvement Fund Wastewater WWTF Emergency Generator Upgrade. Howard?
Yes, thank you. We're looking at alternative sources for, to help us reduce our costs, specifically reduce interest on loans and potentially what they call principal forgiven, or what we would normally consider as grants, to help us with an emergency generator upgrade project at our wastewater treatment facility. This project will cost close to $2 million over three years. And so what we're looking at is these alternative funding sources. And this resolution would appoint the city manager to act as the authorized representative for submitting paperwork regarding this environmental improvement fund assistance.
Questions? Basically appoints Adam, the city manager, to be our authorized representative? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 22-23, appointing the city manager as the authorized representative for environmental improvement fund assistance for the WWTF Emergency Generator Upgrade.
Okay, I have a motion by Todd and a second by Lynn to approve Resolution 22-23. We'll vote. Candace?
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I, agenda item for action is Resolution 22-24 Declaring Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures. Howard?
Yes, this goes along with the one that you just passed. This resolution authorizes us to borrow or spend money for this same emergency generator upgrade project, and then be reimbursed later using the Environmental Improvement Fund monies.
Anybody with questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'm going.
Resolution 22-24 Declaring Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures. I have a motion by Eileen and a second by Kathy to approve Resolution 22-24. Candace will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop? Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that ends the action portion of our agenda for tonight. We'll move into information and discussion items. First, an ordinance amending the official traffic map. This is in relation to Southwest Road. Howard?
Yes. The area along Southwest Road between Pioneer Road and the bridge over the Roundtree Branch does not have curb and gutter. This fall, people have been parking perpendicular to the road in the grassy area between Pioneer Road and the bridge. It causes sight distance issues for people trying to pull out on the Southwest Road. City staff posted it as temporary no parking pending an official change to the ordinance. So we're just basically looking for the official approval by the council for that.
Okay, folks, any questions? I think there was a picture included in your packet. This is the area west of the bridge, and before you get to Pioneer Road. I, I know that people have parked there parallel and walked the trail, but you're saying now people are pulling in?
Correct.
The road looks like it needs some repair.
It does.
Any other questions? Is this just on one side of the road, Howard, not both sides?
Um, we're asking for it on the one side. I believe the other side is particularly steep and would be very hard for people to get in and out of. So we haven't had an issue over there.
Have you considered doing both sides at the same time?
Certainly do that. If that's what you wish, we can amend this for next time.
Well, I'm only thinking that if you don't, pretty soon, somebody with a big four-wheel drive truck is gonna do the same thing. And then we may have a bigger
Is it the other side, university owned?
Yeah, but we would have right-of-way on the edge, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's city right-of-way.
I mean, I think you're right. It is university property. I haven't seen anybody park there, because you're right, it's very steep. But when you take parking away on one side.
I have once in a while seen a parallel park on the north side to use the access to the trail on campus.
When, that's the way it used to be on the south side.
Wouldn't be a sight distance coming off of Pioneer.
Wouldn't be a sight.
So.
True. Yes.
Well, I guess we can wait and see if that happens. Okay, so that'll be on for action at our next meeting. The DNR stewardship grants. Howard?
We've discussed this a few times. Some, some updates that I would like to mention to you is when we, when we spoke with, when I spoke with the folks from the DNR, our submission received scoring points for the LED trail lighting, so that in order to keep the points and not have the grant downgraded and potentially removed from consideration, we need some lighting. So I modified all of the options that used, that said no lighting last time to have minimal lighting. Since I wrote this, the DNR confirmed that, that the proposed reductions would continue to qualify for scoring points. What I did was I basically reinstated lighting at the road trail crossings only. So for the Moundview Trail, that would be at Mitchell Hollow and at Main Street Trail, that would be crossing Valley Road.
So those options are now listed on the Moundview Park Trail. That's option 1E. That shows
Well.
Well, all of them show, what, four lights or, yeah.
Yeah.
Four lights and then boring under the road to get the power across.
That's correct. So, so it's a little bit more than the last time you, you looked at it for those, because I had to add those, those back in.
And there were also ads for the Main Street Connection Trail too, or not?
Yes, I did. I, I added two lights there for the crossing at Valley Road.
Okay, well then, and my understanding is DNR needs a answer from us by the 14th of October. So this, this will be on our agenda for action at the next meeting, and we'll expect PCA to come back with any additional information they may have by then.
Correct.
Okay. All right, on to the next discussion item, information and discussion, Platteville Armory Acquisition Opportunity. Adam?
Yes, so the Platteville Armory was built between 1940 and 1942 utilizing a $32,000 bond issued approved referendum. The referendum passed with the understanding that the National Guard would be responsible for making rent payments to offset the borrowing. The finalized budget for the original project was $100,000, with the remaining funds being covered by Works Progress Administration Funds. Around 1985, the Platteville Armory was officially sold to the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs for $50,000. Due to the community's contribution to the armory's construction, the city of Platteville has long had an agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs to use the facility for a variety, variety of community activities. Most notably, the hardwood drill floor is used by the city recreation department for basketball leagues, karate classes, and other sports. The armory has also been a city voting site and used by its police department for training. The building contains the main drill floor, gymnasium, offices, kitchen, restroom, locker rooms, and storage spaces. The approximate area for each floor is as follows. The first floor is 10,225 square feet. The basement is 9,900 square feet, and the second floor is 3,125 square feet, with the third floor being 593 square feet. The first floor is handicap accessible, but the other floor levels are not. The basement level does have access to grade via an overhead door. So obviously, since becoming the city manager, I have been made aware by staff and council members of conversations over the years regarding the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs' desire to sell the property. I think as most recent in 2018, there were discussions that were going on about potentially doing an RFP, which we can discuss later as an opportunity, but that has been discussed, as well as back and forth conversations about the city taking ownership of the property. So over the course of 2021 and 2022, city staff have been discussing with various members of the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs their approval from the adjutant general to sell and transfer the armory located at 475 North Water Street. Before the Department of Military Affairs can list the property on Wisconsin surplus for a private entity to purchase, they are required to reach out to the city of Platteville to determine if the city is interested in acquiring the building. If the city doesn't wish to gain ownership, DMA would then sell the property to a private party via the Wisconsin surplus process. During initial discussions with the DMA in December of 2021 and again in May of 2022, the city pursued a potential transfer like the $1 transactional transfer done with Platteville School District for OE Gray Learning Center property. Unfortunately, city staff was made aware during the summer of 2022 by DMA representatives that they were not able to get authorization to transfer the property to the city for that amount. During discussions with the DMA regarding the city of Platteville purchasing and gaining ownership of the property, three scenarios were reviewed in greater detail. So scenario one was a land swap with the city for appraised value of the property. The DMA is looking for 20 acres of land, which would be utilized in the future for the creation of a new armory to be built within the next seven to 10 years. Due to the only land of this size being located within our industrial park, this scenario would not be recommended to be considered further by city staff. So then there is scenario two, which would be the outright purchase of the property at the agreed-upon price. So the Department of Military Affairs originally was looking for a purchase price of $320,000 based on an appraisal conducted during April of 2022. During discussion with city staff and the common council, it was noted that the appraisal was made on the extraordinary assumption that no adverse environmental conditions exist on the subject property, and the reliance on an extraordinary assumption may impact the result of the appraisal assignment. DMA provided the city with documentation of lead testing conducted in 2018, 2019, 2021, and 2022, in which the 2022 test results did show two areas within the former firing range floor located in the basement of the armory, which did not meet the acceptable testing requirements. The DMA was required, obviously, then to mitigate these two areas, and that is something that is ongoing. The DMA was also able to provide information to the city that Wisconsin Abestis Management Systems is tracking materials in the 12-inch white and brown tiles and mastic, which makes up approximately 5,300 square feet of the facility. Due to these factors, DMA leadership, DMA leadership approved a proposed reduction on the armory to the city of Platteville for $170,000. The reduction considered an approximate reduction cost of $150,000 for lead mitigation based on their 38 past lead mitigation projects. Upon review by city staff and offer pending council approval and a due diligence period to review all mitigation efforts needed, was made to the DMA for $100,000 with a pending closing date of January 2023. This offer would have required official approval by the common council in open session to allow for the community, obviously, to weigh in. The DMA responded indicating they will not take less than $135,000 and are requiring a closing date of November 1st, 2022. So if the city were to purchase the property, discussion would need to be had about how to officially run and operate the facility. So option one would be complete city control of the property. This facility would be the official recreation center for the community, and in future years, the city would look to move all park and recreation offices and operations to this site. This would include moving park and recreation department to the bottom floor, potentially looking at the senior center being moved to the main floor, and then the recreation staff to the building and potential rental utilization of the second floor space. The main positives of this option is the city has control of the property and continues to run park and recreation activities without any interruptions. The negative is the added cost of having to purchase the property and the continual maintenance and upkeep of facility. The other thing to consider too, as well with the senior center portion of it, is the fact that on the first floor, that is the only area that is currently handicap accessible. So by having that potential, there's also the fact that there is a commercial kitchen there as well, which is one of the requirements that is necessary for the program that we have with Grant County, where they are able to do their real program. So that is something, obviously, that would be a positive, is that would all be able to be done on the first floor, and that would be continued as currently the OE Gray is being looked at for the potential new fire station. Option two then would be another option to consider, which would be a request proposals for sale of the armory to a private entity with the requirement that the city would have utilization of the first floor space for recreational purposes, senior spender space utilization, and access to the kitchen. The remaining floors would be able to be utilized by the private entity, and funding assistance for maintenance and upkeep of the facility would be an ongoing discussion, obviously, with the city. This option would allow the city to recoup the cost of having to purchase the facility. This option then would also have the property added back to the property tax rule, so long as it was sold to a for-profit entity. It also would allow the city to continue to run our park and recreation activities with limited disruptions to the community. Then the third scenario to consider, obviously, would be to decline to purchase the property and allow DMA to list the property on Wisconsin surplus. Obviously, this, the negatives of this would be the city has no control then over the future ownership of the property. If the city is no longer able to utilize the property for recreational purposes, then potentially the city could see a cost increase in budget to cover new rent spaces for recreational programming or loss of revenue for programs that could no longer occur due to space needs. The consideration then also would need to be done as well, that if we move forward with the fire station, we have tenants that are currently renting OE Gray that currently then would have nowhere to go. So that would have to be an ongoing conversation then about potentially cost increases into what we would do for that. Obviously, then, the community then could see a reduction in program offerings or reduced capacity limits due to space limitations. So in regards to kind of the budget and fiscal impact, obviously, it is unclear at this time what the actual cost of operating facility would be. Staff has estimated the cost could be between $25,000 and $35,000 for utility costs based on some of our other buildings that we have. Without a guaranteed revenue stream dedicated to offsetting utility expenses, this cost would have to be covered within the reserve funding of the city and then added to the operational budget, obviously, going forward. Another concern would be the staffing requirements it would take to maintain another building within city operations. Another concern would be the staffing requirements it would take to maintain another building within city operations. Currently, most of our municipal buildings fall under the operations of our building maintenance specialists. Want to make it very clear, I believe Shannon Butson is an amazing asset to our organization, but I obviously worry about running one of our employees break. Since becoming the city manager in two thousand twenty, I've started to review long-term planning changes which would benefit us. As we continue to grow as a city, the need to create a facilities management department is evident to streamline operations. I do feel already there is need to create another position to assist the building maintenance specialist. But if the city were to take on the Plattville Armory, it would need to determine the additional staffing needs, whether that would be full-time, part-time, obviously, would be things we would need to consider. The cost of creating another position at this time is unknown, but an estimate would be between seventy thousand and eighty thousand dollars when including benefits for full-time and roughly thirty thousand to sixty thousand dollars when considering part-time. The estimated budget impact to take on the Plattville Armory would be estimated following as of right now. The purchase of the property would obviously cost a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The utility expenses would be thirty-five thousand. Insurance increases for obviously the property would be five thousand dollars. Maintenance of the property, we typically budget about ten thousand dollars usually for that. And then any staff and wage benefits would be dependent on whether it would be full-time or then discussing potentially a part-time need to obviously handle the building. And then we also would need to be considering capital improvement planning for long-term maintenance because obviously with any building, there's going to be repairs that are need to be done with the furnace, with everything else. So that would be typically, we try to put about ten thousand dollars aside in capital improvement every year. So what we have in there is an estimated total cost for the building is probably around two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that doesn't account for any unknown mitigation cost, which we don't know at this time. That could be fifty thousand dollars, that could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, could be less. So the common council can direct staff to outright purchase the armory property for the requested value of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or a value of their choosing. Funding would be recommended by city staff to come from the following budgetary accounts. There is the senior center building sales that is forty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Obviously, if we are purchasing this property and putting the senior center there, that money has to go towards that. So that can't be a move where we would utilize it and then take that and use it back for something else. Potentially, there would be the opportunity to use park impact fees, which would be twenty thousand dollars. And then we do have some ARPA funds remaining that would be sixty-six thousand twenty dollars and seventy-three cents. That essentially is the estimate right now that comes up with the money that you would be needed. That obviously is up to the council. You can choose to use reserves, you can choose to use different funds, but that's just one way staff is looking at the different funds that we have that make sense for what you would be utilizing this building for. If the property is outright purchased by the city, consideration obviously then needs to be made on whether to have it become a city asset or whether it should be put back on the tax roll via request for proposal process. The park and recreation department has expressed this desire to utilize the facility, and both Director Lo and I have been contacted by business owners interested, obviously, in purchasing the property. So potentially, a requirement could be added to an RFP for a business owner to be able to purchase the armory while giving the city access to the first floor gym, kitchen, and office spaces to continue recreational programming and future utilization by the Plattville Senior Center. If this RFP is desired by the common council, then city staff would recommend we look at entering a short-term borrowing of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with a local bank for the funding to be paid back by the RFP sale of the property to a private entity. Another other option we could consider as well is to see if we could talk to the DMA about potentially delaying any purchase price if we were to go with an RFP option. That way, then, if we went to RFP, whoever would buy that would be responsible for selling it, and then the city truly could utilize some of its other funds then to update the building. And that would be making improvements that obviously would make the building more friendly for not only the senior center, but also recreation and everything else. So that's an option certainly that also could be explored in ways where potentially we could delay having to make that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar payment, but that'd be a question for the Department of Military Affairs that we would have to ask them. So again, recommendations, there's obviously key advantages to having ownership of this facility would be the continued ability to operate recreational programming out of the facility, a permanent location for the Plattville Senior Center when the fire station project occurs, and lease space for potential small business or occupants currently within OE Gray. Right now, the Elks Club is in there as well as Head Start. They potentially could utilize the second floor or pretending on what else could be done. That could be additional space utilized by whether it be the senior center or recreation if we do make improvements to the building. Those are all things that could be considered. City staff also feels the RFP process is an avenue that should be explored to maximize the return on the investment to the city. Obviously, increase the tax base while allowing our park and recreational activities to continue in a familiar venue and form. This would be the current proposal recommendation for staff if asked for a determination at this moment. City staff are looking for a recommendation from the council on how they would like to proceed. So obviously, you have three avenues you can consider. We can either purchase the property, we can look at and then continue to run it as ourselves. We can purchase the property and then move towards the RFP process, or essentially you can make a motion then that would be looking to pass and allow the DMA to put the property up for sale. Those are the options right now. Obviously, this is up for information and discussion. This is the first time, really, this has been hitting out in the open. So what we really want to make sure is everybody has an opportunity to hear the concerns from the council, obviously, to hear concerns from the public and make sure that whatever decision that you guys have, all the information and kind of tools in your tool belt to make a decision that makes the best sense for the city of Plattville. I don't know, Bob, is there anything you want to add from the park side that I missed?
All right.
Okay. Questions? Kathy?
It's not really a question. But in looking at this, it has been quite some time since I've been in the armory. Is it possible to arrange a tour?
Yes.
To physically see. I remember the most recent was when we were voting there in the gym.
Yep.
But it's hard to picture.
Yeah, I think what we could do is we could certainly set up meetings where Bob and I could take each individual council member. We obviously don't want to have you all, or we could as a group, we would just have to notarize it that we'd be going there. But there's options. So we could either do it as a group or we can take individually.
It's hard for me to comprehend this without fresh set of eyes. And then I do have a question. If if the option would be to purchase this and turn around and put it up for an RFP and it would go back on the tax roll, what is the assessed value and what would the property tax reflect?
So that'd be the question, obviously. I mean, it'd have to be appraised. So what I could do is I could run some options for the next meeting and give you some scenarios. I can, unfortunately, I'm not going to have a good idea, but based on the appraisal, I can kind of give you some options so you can see that.
So the DMA had an appraisal of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
But when they engaged the appraiser, they failed to tell the appraiser about the environmental issue. And now they've refused to have an appraisal where that's disclosed?
Essentially, they have not done an appraisal that looks at the environmental impacts. That would be correct. So their their number is based on utilizing essentially costs that they have done at others and coming up with a price. So you're correct. Is their number is based on their assumption, not necessarily what needs to be done.
Well, but the three hundred and twenty thousand was based.
Was based on no issues whatsoever.
No issues whatsoever, which was not true.
Correct.
And then now they're they're taking off this hundred and fifty thousand dollars for lead mitigation based on thirty-eight past lead mitigation projects done how many years ago? Ten?
Roughly.
Yeah, I don't think there's been any change in costs for those things over ten years, surely. Oh, excuse me. Okay. And is this, I don't remember hearing anything about asbestos before. Is this a new?
No, so that was something that they had gone, when we asked for detailed information about any issues with the building, that was, that's what they supplied to us. Is they have been tracking that because they know what's in the floors.
Okay, other questions? Would like a tour?
Yeah, I'd like to be in that tour also. And I'm just really concerned that where it seems like we're getting a reduced price that we may not get it at a reduced price once we have to clean up whatever is there. Asbestos or whatever is there. And so that that would be something to just consider.
So Adam, you talked about a due diligence period. And it would have been during a due diligence period that we would have.
Correct. So our original intention, when we provided them with a letter of intent, was that we wanted till basically January, the end of January, two thousand twenty-three, to be able to truly investigate all costs. That would be, you know, utility costs, any repairs that have been done, any, you know, maintenance that we're going to have to do in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, as well as looking at bringing in an expert. And the response we got was essentially that they wanted a decision made by the first of November.
Ken?
Well, at this point, there's been no cost estimate given to us as far as decreasing the lead presence or covering it up.
From the DMA? Correct. I mean, they're basically going off of.
This is the one thing I was asking for. I might know at this particular meeting here, so we could tell the public and tell the council as to what is needed and as far as abatement.
Right. Essentially, they're saying in their proposal that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what they're estimating. That's what they came down on.
And that's why they discounted.
And that's why they discounted it down from three hundred and twenty to one seventy. And then kind of back and forth negotiations, they came down a little bit more. But they're sticking at one thirty-five. I know that Director Lo has been looking into cost estimates for what it would cost to actually do that, and that's something that we've been ongoing trying to get an estimate on. And what would it cost to bring somebody in, have them look at that? He's waiting back on some answers.
Well, that's what I'd like to see. That's my point at this time. Although we have a number of people here.
Todd, do you have questions?
These two, we're gonna have.
I didn't have any question. I just thought of the other option that can occur, and that is the the BMA selling this property to an individual and they're coming back to us again in a tax issue, you know, where it's dumped back on the city because they don't want to deal with the problem. So you know, this might be our building anyway. So something to consider.
Lynn, do you have any additional? You want to see the building? Any other? Okay. And Kathy, do you have any other questions or comments? Jason?
Yeah, just one. So if we went the RFP route and somebody in the public ended up buying it, would we still be able to like put some type of requirements or have the environmental issues taken care of? Or would that be dependent on whether or not that person that buys it would want to do that? Or how would that work?
So I mean, those are certainly options that can be discussed as the city is. We certainly can require that. Part of the issue now is they are mitigating it to the point that they are not utilizing that space. So it is for the DNR standpoint, there's a process they have to do when it occurs. If it reaches a certain level, they have to mitigate it, which basically right now is to clean it up. And then as long as that space is not being utilized and it essentially is encapsulated, it's considered to be in compliance. When it's not is when obviously we have been notified in the past that there have been issues where, you know, you can't use the building until it passes the test. They've obviously gotten at least assurance that they've done that because we've been able to obviously continue to rent it. So that would be an option, Jason, that certainly could be, you know, considered in the RFP is either it would be that, you know, the owner understands that there are potential issues that either have to be mitigated one hundred percent or would have to be capsulated so that it doesn't, nobody goes in there. Essentially, that space would not be able to be utilized. So if the, you know, if we're selling it to a private entity and they do truly want to use that space, they would be required then by the DNR to fix it or mitigate that issue.
Because, yeah, I think for me, that's the biggest biggest concern I have is making sure that all of the the safety, the environmental things are taken care of regardless of what direction we go.
Eddie? Okay, there are several people here and I guess I'll just call. This is really about acquisition of the armory. So Joyce, you have asked to speak, I guess, against the armory acquisition and moving the senior center to the armory? Okay.
I'm Joyce Boss. I live at fifteen ninety West Gulf Drive in Plattville. And I'm the Chair of the Commission on Aging. And it's very important to me that we have a building and a program and activities that encourage the citizens living in Plattville as they age to remain in Plattville and even move to Plattville for the reason of having an opportunity to improve their life as they are aging. If you agree to acquire the armory, I urge the council to not move the senior center to the armory. And I have several concerns for this, but some of them at the top of my concerns are there's really not a community room space in the armory. I understand there is a gymnasium, but there's not a a community room, and we utilize the community room at OE Gray quite often and have full programs and full activities for our senior citizens. I also am concerned about the accessibility to the to the building. The building does have a ramp in the front, but the parking area is very limited. And that's near the building. There's a large parking lot that you can park in, but with our aging citizens and their mobility and health problems to get from that parking lot, walk up to the building, go around to the front of the building and go up the long ramps to get to the main floor, that's a long way to ask them to move. They're already telling us that to walk from the front of our current building to the lunchroom is already a problem for some of our citizens. We're the only senior center in southwest Wisconsin, and so we really want to maintain our ability to attract and maintain our aging citizens. It's good for Plattville and it's good for it's good for everyone to have programs and activities that will attract and retain our citizens. If you don't currently receive our newsletter, I encourage you to get on our email list so that you can see our full offerings of programs and activities. It's a very active building, and we want to remain active for the city of Plattville. I don't believe that moving the city, the senior center to the armory would meet the needs of the senior center. Thank you.
Do you have any other possible locations? At the proposed location of the fire station?
We don't have any other places that we are considering moving to. It was brought to our attention that perhaps with the building of the new firehouse, that the senior center would be included in the plans and the construction of the firehouse. I don't know anything further than that.
Possible to include senior center there you prefer to stay?
Well, you know, mobility and health issues in the parking lot when the fire trucks are moving out quickly is a concern of mine. And and I would be concerned that as the city grows and perhaps moves to a less than voluntary, a permanent fire group, that we would be moved out again because they would need the the space for training, for exercise, for sleeping residents.
Have you? There's that cost cutters that's in the mall, McGregor Plaza with now for probably almost a year. Is that? Have, are you familiar with that spot?
But we also need kitchen facilities to work with our food group. I'm not sure that that would accommodate us either. No, Ms. Parrot, I've not looked into that.
Okay, we have, and thank you, Joyce. We have another person who's asked to speak to state our concerns. It doesn't say in favor or against. This would be Marv Packer.
I'm Marvin Packer. I live on twelve oh two Cody Parkway in Plattville. I want to thank you for your concern for the senior center. I I want to thank you for your concern for the senior center. I go on through the summary. I see the senior centers mentioned four times. That's, that's pretty good. I've been through this before. I appreciate that, but I do want you to know a little bit more personally, what I've seen from what Joyce talked about. Sally and I moved here four years ago from, well, Minnesota. We had a nice senior center. We have kids in Madison Dodgeville round, and we interviewed a few senior citizen buildings. We bought a nice big house in this town. The only people we knew was our builder and the people we met at the senior center. And I'm not so far different than a whole lot of the people that move into a town. But that's about the reason we moved here. I do have, I guess, our number one choice is senior center would be to remain where we are. And I know you're making all kinds of plans and from what I've heard is the O A Gray will probably get tore down. And if and when we have to move, we're concerned mainly with the transition. I know you've all heard the story about the dashes in between this time and that time. But I'm very concerned that we get disrupted. And I know it's gonna, you know, we're not gonna go one place one day and the next place the next day, but the transition is gonna be very, very important to us, whether we go to the Armory or, or any other place you're considering. There's disruption in the routine. You know, we, you've probably seen it if you go to church, any reason people quit coming to church, it's hard to get them back. We've all been through the COVID thing here a couple of years ago. A little personal thing, Sally and I had signed up early twenty twenty to take a trip to Amanda Colonies, which is one of the other things we could talk about that Jill and the staff does at the senior center to provide facilities. Anyways, the trip to Amanda was canceled because of the shutdown in March of twenty twenty. We finally took that trip in August, just over two years later. But they got it done. The only sad thing, and this is not the only case, but my wife Sally couldn't make it. She died in the meantime. And the other thing you're gonna notice with us seniors, we're all kind of old, and you're all gonna get there. And we don't mean to rush things because things are rushing in on us. And so when we make this transition, the smoother and the better you can do it, the better. I'm gonna leave the planning up to you. I'm not gonna do that. I guess the other thing is talking about the trips. Jill makes all of these arrangements, and you can't just get a speaker or a group or somebody to come in to this building and say, well, it's closed. We have to kind of know ahead of time where we're gonna be. So if we have to move, the shorter the time that we're without a facility, the better. But we are, somebody else mentioned it on the council, very interested in the Armory. Well, any new place that you get, we're very interested in it too. We would like to know what we're getting. Joyce seemed to know the building better than me. She said it doesn't quite fit. The summary made it sound like it would be pretty nice. It's got the, the space, it's got the access, it's got the kitchen. That's, that's all the stuff we need, but we are interested in what you're gonna provide for us. So, and if we can assist in any way, if you need any input on what we need or like, please allow us to help you. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Packer. I have Mary Larson, who's just said she wants to speak. Mary?
I'm Mary Larson, five ten North Water Street, and I had mixed feelings about the Armory because they have a nice big parking lot, which is awesome. However, like Joyce brought up earlier, the parking isn't conducive to older people. And the parking that we've had at the, at the current place and the last place that the senior center was at was just plain crappy. If you wanted to attend something at the senior center on Court Street, you had to get a sticker and put it in your windshield so you could stay at the, to continue a bingo game or something else because of the parking situation. And at O A Gray, they got a little patch of gravel and then the hill goes down. There's not much place to park, so people are lining up and down the street trying to find parking to get into the place. And the other thing is the Armory is, says first floor handicap. It sounds great, however, to a point. It is a handicap ramp with a sharp turn, and then there's cement walls, a wall on one side and the building on the other. And there's railings when you're on the first level, then you swing up and go around. Well, what I would say is how do you get like a wheelchair, somebody in a cane, somebody in a motorized wheelchair to turn those corners to get up into there? It's a long way on that ramp to walk because I had to do it at one time when I had an issue with walking. I was using a cane and, and a walker at one time. So I know those are difficulty things, and the other thing is there's only one way in for the handicap. There is the, the other way exit out of the, off the first floor is a set of steps on the side door. There's no elevator to get you down to a lower level to the ground. And in the winter time, the steps are, could be very slippery, but you go in and out of the armory because they're not that they don't have rails close enough to each other you can grab on to help yourself down if you got a problem when you're older. And then the ceiling in the, the gymnasium, which I guess that would, we would be shoved, put into is, it's a big wide open area with a high vaulted ceiling, which adds to your costs for air conditioning and heating because of how the air rises and lowers. So that's another added expense, one way or the other, for whoever does that stuff. And I guess I'd like to know how this is gonna affect the senior center budget because a while back, they got, they had, they were forty thousand dollars were taken out of their budget. It was reduced. And now it looks like it may be being reduced some more. So what is the point where they eventually, we're doing all these fundraisers to try and get things, even a handicap van? The one van that we got when the other one crashed was they had to take a step, a step stool and help people in with their walkers. They pulled the walker up and put it in the back of the van. Well, that isn't very conducive to helping a handicapped person. And the people that couldn't get into the van, they'd have the taxi bring them. So, so those are kind of some difficulties there with the Armory is to the location. In the kitchen, they do, I think you need to take a look at what the senior center has now for what they've got over at the Armory. They've got a commercial kitchen, I heard, at the Armory, but they need a big kitchen. They do like eighty meals. And a lot of those are deliveries, and the only way you can get a delivery through the senior center is to go through the ADRC. So they approve that you can have a meal delivered to your home. So, um, but anyway, and as far as I'm understanding, is the senior center staff that we have right now, they're all part-time. Nobody has a full-time job, and they're, and those people spend more hours than what they get paid for just to be there to help people. And like the kitchen, I think of the Armory is way too small. How would you fix eighty meals? Plus two of the meals for people are coming in to eat. And the senior center needs a secure area, and if you get an area that's being shared by others, how do you secure it? Because of all the things that they do at the senior center. So I think, and then I think that when you do your tour of this, of the Armory, that you should have the staff from the senior center come and take a look too, so that they can express some of their needs and what they're very concerned about. Because that's an important thing for them because they have to work with it. I saw what happened when they moved from the senior center on Court Street. They had the kitchen right there and the, and the people go up with their tray and get their trays and go sit down. At the new play, at the O A Gray, the kitchen is not near the, where the people eat. It's across the hallway. They have to go through one door into the next door, come in to set up all the stuff. And then people come and get, and pick up their food. Then they have to pack it all up, move it back in across the hallway. So that wasn't a very good move either. They didn't have running water in the place where we needed water in the dining area. And then somebody donated money to, I think I'm understanding it was donated money to put in a sink so we had running water within the area where they made the coffee and stuff. So the senior center isn't a lot flush with money. So they're very careful what they're spending. They do their bratwurst sales, all sorts of other sales to try and earn money to help support the senior center. So I don't know if that helps yet at all, but I don't think the, the Armory is the best place. Is the seniors really need someplace that's low to the ground, not climbing steps or ramps. Because it is like, if you come and watch people going into the senior center, you'll see all sorts of people with their walkers or chair. There are motorized wheelchairs and all sorts of other things. So I don't know if that helps you or not, but that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
And the final person who has given me a green sheet is Ray Banffy.
Good evening. I'm Ray Banffy. I've lived here in Platteville longer than I did in Cicero, Illinois. I grew up on a west side of Chicago, and there were six of us kids, five boys and one girl. God help mom and dad. What saved our lives at that young age was the Boys Club in Cicero. It was a community place where we could get together, play activities, games. They had a gym upstairs, they had a two-lane bowling alley downstairs in the basement. They had a craft center. And it was an excellent place to stay off the streets because Cicero has a reputation of being a tough area. And we didn't mind getting involved in games. And I see the community center as a parallel to this because this saves the lives of older people. They have a, like Joyce and a couple of them mentioned, that place to go and have friendships, and a place where you could gather, eat together, play games together, take part in other activities, crafts, exercise. Have their blood pressures checked, diabetes checked, listen to speakers. There's many things they do at this building. The Armory could not provide that. I've been there. I've been a Chief Ball Inspector at that building many years and worked there, volunteered helped. And I never saw the basement, which was a old shooting range. I don't know what that looks like now. I'd like to have a tour of the Armory basement. The middle floor is, consists of mainly a large gym. You have the little kitchen in one corner, a couple bathrooms, and then where the military has some offices in the front. Again, Mary mentioned the access to the building. Parking was on the north side. You had to come all the way to the front of the building to get up this real narrow ramp. Very dangerous for people in a wheelchair if you don't have someone pushing them. And I, you know, I don't know what your liability issues are, but the senior center now is zero steps. They could come in at the south entrance where there's a covered area, go right up to the door, push the button, both doors open to get in. On the other side, on the north side are also an entrance where they could get in and use the automatic doors. They come right into a large gathering area. There's many uses for the Alps Club, Southwest Cap. You've heard all the other groups that have used it before. I've been approached at a couple meetings and a couple other functions. Community Center and Senior Center in one building. Why not use that as a whole things? Rockford has something similar to that. Whitewater uses their senior center, community center together. And the fire department could be next door at one of them. In Highland, Wisconsin, they have it. Senior Center, Fire Department, wherever it works together. So, all of my concerns. Also, when you, when you see the gym in the Armory, how are we gonna have activities there? Cheer yoga, other yoga sports, pickleball, led rides. We've had speakers use the big community room, card crafts, other crafts. Cards, dominos. The senior center might have a bad reputation that all we do is play bingo. Many, many activities. We go on trips like some of other speakers mentioned. Have speakers. We have the Heisman come over and do a short program for their school musical. College has come over and done different programs. Part of their class is to do a video program for Lawrence College in Dubuque. Was it at Lawrence College? They did a great job, great job for, and we'd like to present that to a council meeting in the future, so action. It's just so hard to see us using just a main floor of the Armory. When we feed people there, you know, sometimes we've had large trials. Choose what days that you eat there at, at the senior center, O A Gray building. During the COVID, I did stuff a few times to help drive meals to people that over or had a hard time or afraid of COVID, and we would drive, deliver meals on wheels. Sometimes we would have a hundred meals that delivered. To people that need us, you know, we don't have a place to dish out the food and prepare it and then get the van ready to deliver it and like, we're waiting for a special van that could have a lift in the back to help people get in with a wheelchair or walker. The old bus, like you said, down, they had to use a special step to get up. And a lot of people are afraid to go to the O A Gray because we don't have a mini bus or a van. You have to bring some people there that need a ride. That's what's hurt us. And like Mark said, that it's hard to change. You know, when we had the building over at post office right next door, what is it now? Some kind of tattoo place or some weird dragon place? I mean, that was a good building, but we were asked to move. And we're happy to have the O A Gray, but like Mark says, it's a big change for people to move from, you know, one place and try to get comfortable in another place. It takes time. People like, like, especially, you know, you get to an age, you don't want to have all these big changes and oh, how am I gonna get there? What are you gonna do there? Is it big enough? Until we show them around, it's taken a few years for people to really get to see it. These are some of our concerns. Also, the cost. You mentioned in here that might be a possibility under part three or something, that you might have businesses use the O A Gray. I mean, how many people are gonna use it for business? We have so many people getting the use out of it or a community center, senior center, more than these businesses trying to raise money. We're trying to raise money too. We have to pay rent, fifteen thousand dollars a year to the city. Other places, I don't know how much they pay for their senior centers, but we have to pay rent for that building, and we've been hanging in there like rock sales and Ellie had an excellent first year for our August, Christmas in August. She raised two to three thousand dollars there. Brilliant idea she came up with. We're lucky to have her. Definitely, it's been here for years. She knows everybody. Right now, temporary, taking John's place. John will act at Kansas field as parents. But, you know, I highly recommend Ellie to be, maybe if she wants to step into John's boots. These two jobs, positions are only part-time. I think twenty hours a week. These two jobs positions are only part time. I think twenty hours a week, no benefits, no, no health insurance, nothing like that. I don't know if we could really get somebody that would come in, take John's place, but Ellie does a super job. Ellie and Jill get along really well and that's nice. So they're good partners, work together. We have a good supportive board. And I've been on the board for a number of years. I was really honored to be chosen as voluntary year as a senior center. Had a choice, a chance to get up there and get a certificate at the park. It's quite an honor. I know who the I'm gonna recommend next year, but she has worked very hard and I recommend, you know, I'll recommend her, but but what are the costs of tearing down O A Gray if you decide to tear it down? How much is that gonna cost? Anybody take an estimate? Two hundred thousand, hundred thousand, what? All the bricks in there? That building is still in good shape. If you ever have a a check of the Army, what do you call it, inspector? They're gonna see that there's some of those tiles that there is asbestos in there. The wiring is old, built in nineteen forty, forty two, during World War Two, for crying out loud. The O A Gray was built in the late sixties. That building is in solid shape. And it's been updated. Jill's painted the whole room around the community room. It looks great. People are comfortable there. People go to the Army to hear that heat thing go on. When I was helping with the elections, the heating unit is on the ceiling and when that sucker turned on, bang, bang, it made a heck of a noise. And it provided a little bit of heat, but in winter we froze our butts off. We had to wear coats. All the chief, you know, inspectors said, you know, you know, we're close and people helping. So I'm glad we moved to the Bracy Center. That has worked out great. If you please keep the O A Gray building, I truly believe the future we could have a community center, senior center together. And it could be part of the fire department. How many acres or how much is that lot that land there? From all the way from the east where the O A Gray from the second street and all the way to was that street past the field? I mean, that is a huge space for a fire department. And it would be so much wiser to just add on, maybe tear off the two rooms on the west side of O A Gray and build on. You could still have an overhead or something. You could still bring the fire trucks in both ways on that street in between. I mean, we would sure like to see how, but the people that draw out the plans or whatever, could look at that whole property and see how we could work something out. But people are starting to give up already. Oh, they're gonna tear down O A Gray. And I see that as sad, a waste building, wasted effort. When we could still use that for a number thirty, forty years yet. And so consider the cost of tearing it down or or trying to move businesses in there or or trying to rebuild Armory. The Army building is in really sad shape. I'd like to get the tour, see what the basement looks like. I've never been down in the basement, the shooting range upstairs. Like I said, the gym takes off most of the area. You have maybe about one fourth of the third floor is maybe a few offices. So I can't see adding all those other offices like you were talking about other activity, other city business offices up there or whatever the Armory. It would just, the people would not come to Army for senior center. They would be just too claustrophobic. They wouldn't come there for meals. We might be only service we could do would be serve meals out to the community. And which would really hurt. We might lose the senior center if we don't have a decent building that we've been used to and that the senior citizens from fifty on up, we have people that come out there part time workers or whatever, play cards with the older folks. We've had grade school kids come in, preschool kids and work with seniors. This makes those people happy, the young kids and the older kids. Psychological studies have proven that seniors that are involved with those people with different ages really helps their their whole feelings of being being useful. So I think I covered it all.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Okay, that is, that is the group that those are the folks who had requested to speak. We will likely move this if you're gonna schedule a tour.
Yep.
That's our next. And so allow us to know when that is and I would say schedule a tour time and post it as a meeting so that everybody can be there to gather instead of seven different tours.
Yeah. And if that's then too, it's an open meeting. So pretty much if we post that, anybody's welcome to come to it.
Anybody.
So we'll make sure we get that out and we let everybody know.
Okay. All right. That would be any, anybody have any other questions of Adam relative to the acquisition, the staff? Otherwise, we'll work, we'll we'll move to financial auditing services, R F P. And Adam, that's you too.
It is. So this is pretty much, we've kind of coined this the year of R F Ps, so why not do another one? So this is kind of the one of the last ones we've been working on, which is obviously our auditors. So that is currently right now Johnson Block, who does our audit every year. They usually come in about June or July and kind of give you guys the financial presentation of everything going on. So just kind of making sure we're doing our due diligence. We looked at, I polled the previous R F P that we did for our auditing services, I think was back in two thousand eighteen. So tentatively, what we'll be looking at is releasing this R F P September thirtieth, then having submissions due October twenty eighth, then we do some interviews November first through the fourth with council reviewing it the first time November eighth and then potentially making action November twenty second. So kind of the homework I'm asking is for the council members to take a look at this, see if there's anything that we missed or grammars that we made. We'll make the changes then and then we'd be looking then towards the end of this week to getting this out to the public and start asking for people to submit.
Okay, any questions on this R F P for financial auditing services and as Adam said, Johnson Block has been our auditor for the past several years. And I'm sure that they'll submit along with other public firms that do municipal audits. Okay, that ends the information and discussion portion of our agenda. We do have two closed sessions scheduled. Closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eight, nineteen point eight five parent one parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This would be in relation to development agreements. We'll move right from that closed session to a second closed session per Wisconsin statute nineteen eight five parent one parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This would be the twenty twenty three employee compensation slash staffing information. We are not expected to take action in either of these closed sessions. So it would be our intent to adjourn from closed session to open session and adjourn immediately without action.
Correct.
So do we need two motions for each of the one?
You need one.
I need one motion. So I need one motion to go into closed session with these two items.
I'm moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by I mean to go into closed session per Wisconsin State statute nineteen eight five as earlier read on two different items, development agreements and the twenty twenty three employee compensation slash staffing information. Candace will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.